Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular scheduled City Council meeting of Wednesday, April 2nd, 2025. Let the record show that all councilors are present tonight. At this time, we'll do the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're looking under ads and deletes. We have ads consent agendas, item number 2B, bids and quotes, number 2A. Delete departments committee reports, number 7F. Could I have approval of agenda?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Swiberger.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. We'll move on to approval of the minutes. Approve the minutes of the Hibbing City Council meeting of March 19th, 2025. Wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Whitney. Support. Support by Councilor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. I'll move on to the consent agenda. One, approve accounts payable dated March 27, 2025, checks number 179636 through 179739, and drafts an amount of $1,059,519. Two, approve the accounts payable dated March 28, 2025, checks numbers 179740 through 179742, an amount of $14,550.17. Three, approve the city payroll ending March 21st, 2025, an amount of $616,657.87. Four, offer resolution number 250401 authorizing city of Hibbing to make applications to and accept grant funds from the IRR revenue bonds. Five, declare the equipment trailer as surplus. Six, accept the proposal from Adolphian Peterson Construction as the construction manager at risk for the city hall window and masonry restoration project. Seven, proclaim April as 2025 Sexual Assault Awareness Month and authorize the mayor to sign the proclamation. Eight, authorize the mayor to sign and send a letter St. Louis County Board of Commissions in support of the county's plans for a new public works facility. Nine, authorize the city council to attend the Hibbing Chamber of Commerce Hibbing Range Expo 2025 on Saturday, May 3rd, 2025, at the Memorial Building. Ten, authorize city council to attend the League of Minnesota Cities Annual Conference, City Fest, which runs June 25th through the 27th in Duluth. Eleven, authorize city council to attend a range party hosted by the Iron Range delegation on April 7th, 2025, in Mancines in St. Paul. Twelve, authorize, approve the special events permit request of the Hibbing College Foundation to host the second annual positively pickleball tourney on August 2nd, 2025, at the Hibbing Pickleball Outdoor Courts in Bennett Park. Thirteen, approve the raffle parade application request of the Blue Jackets Track and Field Booster Club to hold a raffle on May 15th, 2025, at Cheever Field. Fourteen, approve the raffle permit application request of the Hibbing Chisen Breakfast Rotary to hold a raffle on May 1st, 2025, at the Hibbing National Guard Armory. Fifteen, approve the raffle parade application request of Blessed Sacrament Church to hold a raffle on May 16th, 2025, at Blessed Sacrament Church, St. Louis Hall. Seventeen, approve the raffle parade application request of the Hibbing Historical Society to hold a raffle on May 2nd, 2025, at the Android by Boon Town. Seventeen, approve the raffle parade application request of the Hibbing Area Chamber of Commerce to hold a raffle at Mr. Nick's Bar on Thursday, July 10th, 2025. Eighteen, approve the paddler of transient virtue license of David Cappenelli doing business as Cappy's Kettle Corn. Nineteen, approve the massage therapy license of Sabrina Felton of a Heavenly Touch Massage at 1101 East 37th Street, Suite 1. Twenty, approve the massage therapy license of Ann Timmerman of Red Oak Massage, 1101 East 37th Street. Twenty-one, approve the special event permit application of the Hibbing Area Chamber of Commerce to hold Jubilee Sidewalk Sale and Car Show on Friday, July 11th, 2025, from the 100 to 500 block of Howard Street. Twenty-two, approve the special event permit application of the Hibbing Area Chamber of Commerce to hold the Jubilee Festival on 5th and Kids Carnival on Saturday, July 12th, 2025, between the Hibbing Public Library and Hibbing City Hall. Twenty-three, approve the special event permit application of the Hibbing Area Chamber of Commerce to hold the Jubilee Parade on Saturday, July 12th, 2025, on First Avenue and Howard. Twenty-four, approve the special event permit application of the Hibbing Chamber of Commerce to hold the Range Expo at the Hibbing Memorial Building on Saturday, May 3rd, 2025. Twenty-five, approve the special event permit application of Washington ELCPTO to host Washington in Your Neighborhood on Tuesday, April 29th, 2025, at Brooklyn Park. Twenty-six, approve the special event permit application of the Hibbing Police Department to hold the Range Youth Police Academy from July 7th, 2025, through August 18th, 2025. Twenty-seven, authorize the Hibbing City Council to attend the April 30th, 2025, City Council Workshop Meeting of April 30th, 2025, at 5:00 PM in the Hibbing City Council Chamber. Twenty-eight, approve the 2025 Tobacco License of CAPL Retail LLC doing business as Express Lane, 3017 First Avenue. Twenty-nine, authorize Mayor Hayduk to sign the letter of support regarding Senate File 2045- Equal Access to Broadband Act. Set the next regular Hibbing City Council meeting for Wednesday, April 16th, 2025, at 5:00 PM. Lastly, thirty-one, set the next Hibbing Council Workshop for Wednesday, April 16th, following the regular meeting at 5:00. Wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read and published.
We have a motion by Councilor Hoff Sakman. Support?
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
On number one, the amount is $1,159,469.60.
So there was one missing there.
You know, there's the draws that they do, the ACH, and then there's also...
So $1,159...
$469.60.
Okay. $469.60.
Yep.
Very good. I stand corrected?
Nope, my fault.
All right. After that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. Anybody know public forum tonight, Candy? Okay, so move on. Department and committee reports. First up is committee Gignam Kivav for Ms. Olavanti. Good evening.
Good evening, mayor members of the council. The item I have in front of you tonight is a request to approve the proposal for the 2025 Greater Minnesota Housing Infrastructure Grant Application Writing Assistance with Miriam Carroll Consulting in the amount of $3,862.50. We're looking to bring in additional funds to assist the city with deploying the infrastructure to the HRA of Hibbing's site for Phase 1 and Phase 2.
Very good. Do you know what the amount we will be writing for?
We'll write for the maximum amount because the, I believe, based on the project, the maximum amount, and I've been, this is a new program, so I think it's up to $500,000, but we have to provide a one-to-one match on that. So we'll write for the maximum amount that we can gather, request funds for. We're working with Hibbing Public Utilities and have not heard back on the water and the electric and some of those other additional costs.
All right. I appreciate that. Looking for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Councilor Hoffman Sakman.
I think Councilor Hildebrand.
Councilor Hildebrand. Support by Councilor Hildebrand. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Nancy. Move on to city engineer. Mr. Story.
Mayor Council attaches a cooperative agreement between the city Hibbing and the Hibbing Public Utilities for the 23rd Street project. We'd like to be a little more professional, have a formalized agreement for when we partner with projects with the Hibbing Public Utilities. What the agreement does, it spells out the obligations by each entity within the project. That project will be later in the agenda under the bids and quotes. So I'm asking for council approval to have the mayor, clerk, and administrator sign the cooperative agreement.
Very good. Hearing what Mr. Story had to say regarding a cooperative agreement. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless. Any other discussion? Is this something that came out of our working...
Correct.
Very good. That's what we want to see happen, so... Hearing no other discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. B, Mr. Story.
Mayor Council attaches a quote from IEA for the asbestos project design onsite air monitoring and project management for the abatement of the hazardous materials at the Public Safety Building. This is the next step in the design, so IEA will handle the coordination of all the abatement. They'll go out for quotes, they'll come back to the city with those quotes, so we can approve that work. So the fee for the project design is $1,900, and the fee for the onsite air monitoring, project management, and report completion is estimated between $8,000 and $11,000.
Okay.
So I'm asking for council to approve this proposal.
So what you're looking for is approval of a $1,900 fee and up to $11,000?
Yes, very good.
All right, hearing what Mr. Story had to say. Wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Councilor Hoffman Sakman. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you.
Move on to Finance Director Treasurer, Ms. Muller.
Good evening, mayor members of the council. For item A, I'm offering resolution number 25-04-02, approving the estimated operating budget and pledging funds for the ongoing operation of the new Public Safety Building. This is a requirement to enter into our grant agreement with the state of Minnesota for a $10 million award to construct our new Public Safety Building. We analyzed the operating cost of the facilities that we own and occupy already to figure out an estimated per square footage rate for overhead. We also looked at the current contracts we have for facility repairs and maintenance to determine estimated costs. The estimated budget, this one that we came up with reflects an increase of about $115,000 to what we currently pay. However, we will also have an increase of 180% square footage to meet our operational needs. The largest line item of the increase is for one budgeted full-time equivalent, which would be for maintenance. Our police department currently shares its costs with the county, and the fire department currently does routine maintenance in-house. At this point, this number is an estimate. What the state is requesting at this point in time is that we are committing to paying for the ongoing operating costs of the facility once it's built. So I'm asking if council will approve this resolution.
Okay, hearing what Ms. Muller had to say regarding a resolution for supporting a new safety building to meet the state's requirements. Wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Swiberger. Support. Support by Councilor Whitney. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Sheena.
Thank you.
Move on to Police Chief, Mr. Eske.
Mayor Council, good evening. Tonight, I have three grant awards to accept on behalf of the city. The first one is a $10,000 grant from the Amsoil K9 Foundation, and this will be used towards the K9 purchase for Gunner.
Okay, hearing what Mr. Eske had to say regarding a grant for K9 Gunner. Wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Hoffman Sakman.
Support.
Support by Councilor Hildebrand. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. B, Chief.
The second one is a $2,000 grant from the Hibbing Foundation and its family of funds. These funds will be used towards tactical gear to make our officers safer.
Okay, hearing the request for grant funds to accept for tactical gear. Wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. C, Chief.
Mr. Mayor, I will abstain.
Okay, very good. We have one abstain.
And then the last one is also from the Hibbing Foundation and the family of funds. This is a $400 grant towards National Night Out on August 5th.
Okay. Looking for a resolution to accept funding for the National Night Out from Hibbing Foundation. Wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Whitney.
Support.
Support by Councilor Swiberger. Any other discussion?
I will abstain.
Oh, you will abstain? Okay. With one, we will abstain. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. Thank you. At this time, we'll move on to Library Director, Ms. Rain.
Good evening, Jill.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city members, council members. The first thing I have for you is to authorize the mayor to sign a location agreement with Just Film Project Incorporated for use of the library in connection with the motion picture, Love Sets Maneuver, for $200 on April 5th, 6th, and the 23rd.
Very good. We're looking for support for a location agreement. Wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Hoffman Sakman.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. B, Jill.
Next, I've got four grant funds going on here. I've got, the first one is $5,000 from the Hibbing Foundation and its family of funds in support of our 2025 Summer Reading Program, Level Up at Your Library.
Okay, we need a resolution accepting grant funds for Level Up at Your Library Reading Program. Wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Swiberger.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless. Any discussion?
Will abstain.
Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. C, Jill.
Next, I've got $2,500 in grant funds from the Lake Country Power in support of the 2025 Summer Reading Program, Level Up at Your Library.
Okay, so we have another resolution accepting grants from Lake Country Power for Level Up at Your Library Summer Reading Program. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Whitney.
Support.
By Councilor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. D, Jill.
All right, I got another $2,500 in grant funds from United Way of Northeastern Minnesota in support of the 2025 Summer Reading Program, Level Up at Your Library.
Okay, another resolution accepting grant funds for the reading, summer reading program at the library, Level Up at Your Library. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Councilor Hildebrand. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. E, Jill.
We've got another grant fund of $8,159.89 from the St. Paul and Minnesota Foundation in memory of June B. Hendrickson to use to help purchase reading materials for the library.
Very nice. So we're looking for resolution except grant funds to purchase reading materials in memory of June B. Hendrickson. Wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Swiberger.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay.
Mr. Mayor, I will abstain.
Want to stand? And, oh, I said all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
This time, we move on to City Attorney, Mr. Borland.
Mayor members of the council, item 6A is a resolution authorizing the transfer of real property from the city of Hibbing to the Hibbing Housing and Redevelopment Authority and further to authorize the repurchase of that same property. I mentioned this to you at the last meeting where you approved not having to refer this to the planning commission. This involves the building that was our transit building, Fairhead Transit. So by the nature of how we purchased that, there were bonds outstanding to the state, and one of the ways to get out from underneath the restrictions with regard to that is to sell it to a third party. The state actually suggested that the HRA might be a viable alternative to do that. HRA was kind enough to agree to move forward like this, and Aaron and Sheena and I attended a public hearing that they held last week with regard to this issue, and there was no opposition to it at that time. So this is simply a resolution authorizing the sale to the HRA and further to have the HRA agree to sell it back to the city for the same price.
Very good. Hearing what Mr. Borland had to say. Wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Hoffman Sakman.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. B, Andy.
Mayor members of the council, next, 6B is a resolution authorizing the transfer of lots in Brooklyn to the North St. Louis County Habitat for Humanity for housing the city of Hibbing. The next three all kind of mirror one another. Ms. Olavanti entered, negotiated a do- an agreement last year with regard to these particular lots with North St. Louis County Habitat. They paid them over time. This kind of slipped through the cracks, I think mostly within my office, just to get the authorization done, because I think they need to still do some parcel work on at least one of these.
Okay.
But this is the authorization. They've paid the amount that they were required to pay per the negotiation, so this is simply the authorization to execute the deed and the transfer.
Okay, so we'll do one at a time then. B, first, of course.
Please.
Hearing what Mr. Borland had to say. Transfer of lots to Habitat for Humanity. Wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries.
Mayor members of the council, this one is with regard to lots within Forest Grove. Again, it's a transfer to Habitat for Humanity.
Very good. We're looking at support for transfer property to Habitat for Humanity. Wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Whitney.
Support.
Support by Councilor Hoffman Sakman. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries.
Mayor, D is a lot in Sergeant Edition. This is right around where Mr. Spanish used to live on the corner of 19th and 7th Avenue East. It's a vacant lot now. There was a house there at one time, but this is also for a transfer to Habitat for Humanity.
Very good. Again, resolution to support a lot for Habitat for Humanity. Wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Councilor Swiberger. Any discussion?
I'm just curious, how many lots in total? So I believe it's four. I believe one had, one of these had two lots on it. The other one was legally described to each other as one. I'll verify for that. John? Okay. Yeah, I was curious. A couple of them said it's lots, so I just needed... Sure.
Very good. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. E.
Mayor members of the council, within your packet tonight, there is a resolution accepting and approving AP Midwest has the guaranteed maximum price bid amendments as they presented. So there's a lot of your packet actually takes up this information. AP presented very detailed specifications, contract documents to the city actually last year on two of these major things. The city administrator referred those to me for review. I responded last year with regard to that. AP met with Greg and I in January with regard to one of the documents and ironed out some concerns that I had. And then actually, prior to your last meeting, we met with AP again for about two and a half to three hours, ironing out the other document. So that's what you're doing tonight is to approve essentially bid package number one to move forward with that, having AP be, and this is the guaranteed maximum price and with their amendments in there as to how they can proceed with the Public Safety Building.
Okay. Hearing what Mr. Borland had to say, a resolution accepting and approving guaranteed maximum price bid amendment. Ask for any by AP Midwest LLC. Wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Swiberger.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. Thank you so much, Andy.
Thanks, Ray.
This time, we move on to City Administrator, Mr. Przynski. Any...
Yes, please, Mr. Mayor, City Council. A few items from my office this evening. I will start with my apologies for the lateness of the packet. It's not our standard protocol, obviously, to get that packet out. On Tuesday afternoon, I know we have a lot of people that watch the broadcast, that follow the agenda and the packets, so my apologies to all of those folks that received that late. It was one of the more challenging packets that we've brought together. It looks pretty straightforward when it comes to the city council and our residents, but it was a bit of a challenge, and he just kind of went over one of the challenges that we had bringing that agreement together. So again, that's a long way of apologizing to the city council and our residents for that. So to kind of wrap up that conversation, we will be more proactive when it comes to using placeholders. We have a lot of projects going on, a lot of things that kind of developed over the weekend. So we'll use placeholders. We'll try to get all of that information, the information that we have available at the time to the city council, so you have the weekend to review that packet. So item number two from my office is something that we have been debating for quite a while, the animal shelter, the pound. We have it set up as an intake currently. So we want to do a little bit of an update, and I'll have Candy help us through some of the details. But so we've been seeing a lot of animals come through the intake, and it's taken up a fair amount of staff time to address those issues. They're live beings, so of course they need to be serviced two or three times a day. So as we kind of go through this, one of the things I want you to think about, and if you agree with it, we'll need to take action. It's an action item. Hiring two, maybe three more people to help us through this time of need when it comes to servicing those animals. Also, we think now is a good time to move forward with our internal staff working with our residents when it comes to adopting some of those animals out, and here's why. The need is great. I think we have about 20 animals currently in the pound. Our options for getting those animals to where they need to go are pretty limited currently. A lot of those are going to other shelters, and there's a lot of details behind that, but we do see a need. So one of the things that we wanted to talk to the city council about and get some action on, or get some direction on, and remember, if we're going to be adopting those animals out, which we do have the authority under the statutes to do, those animals are currently being vetted. We're doing all that vetting work ahead of time, so we could do that pretty easily. Again, there'll be some additional staff time, administrative time to do that. And then some of the other things that we've been talking about internally is what's kind of a long-term plan for the building, the real estate. We've talked a little bit about engaging with the airport authority and seeing if we can transfer that property to the city, so we'll buy out their interest in it. We think that's a good possibility. We've reached out to the airport general manager. We think there's good interest. Is the city council serious about that? Because if you are, we will continue to move that forward. We think there are some ordinances that should be realigned. We know that'll be another step. It'll take some additional time, but we think we should clean that ordinance up in anticipation of putting out an RFP if that's what we decide to do. We bring that RFP into the conversation because if we are working with the airport authority to buy out their interest in the real estate, one of the conversations we've had with the city council is divesting of that real estate, the building, I mean, all of those activities that surround the shelter, animal shelter, intake, dot pound, whatever you want to refer to it as. We would want to be able to have a feel for what the city council wants to do before we assemble that RFP, because if we are going to buy the real estate, divest of the real estate and the building and the service, we're going to want to interview people with that in mind. So that was a lot. My apologies. But Candy, did I forget anything? I know there's a lot of detail there that we probably don't need to go into, but those are the pieces that we want to talk to the city council about tonight and get some direction on. So how about if I just open up for questions?
Well, I'll start, Mr. Przynski. As far as securing ownership of that property, I think it's in our best interest to do that. I don't know how it ever got set up the way it is. But anyways, my opinion on that piece is yes. I think we want to pursue that action of having complete control of not only the building, we already have a building, but the property also, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So, Mr. Przynski, when you said about two to three more people, would they be full-time? Would be summer help? What are we looking at there?
Thank you, Councilor Hoffman Sakman. So we're looking at four...
So we're looking at four people, because if, they can only be like, under thirty hours per week, and so they would not be full-time people, they would be basically a temporary, and it would be less than six months. We just need to make sure that the animals are cared for, and right now, our code enforcement officer has really been helping out, and it's, we're getting into blight season, and we want to make sure that she is able to take care of that part of her job.
And so we have the funds to handle that increase in personnel?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so between the vet bills that we've been paying out, and then the temporary help, we're not even coming close to what we would normally spend per month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Else, there's any other questions?
Well, I'm just one of, I've said it before, I'm firm in the camp of divesting of that property, and hopefully having an interested party going in there and operating as an independent animal rescue five oh one C three, whatever. This whole situation is weird with having leased land, third-party people in a city building, and it's just a mess, and I want to get away from that, and I'm firmly with you on that.
So what I understand you're saying, Mr. Council Whitney, is you would want to divest and, and we would just pay for their services, like-
Like most cities.
Like most cities.
Just contract with a rescue group.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear on what your training thought was.
Yeah, so the city doesn't have oversight of a third-party group, it's just chaos. So, I would want to see what most cities do, and just get a contract with a rescue outfit, and they know how to take care of the animals and get to find them homes.
Any other, thank you so much for that, any other direction or thoughts for Mr. Przynski?
Will we move on the direction you're going? Are they requiring that land with the key?
So that being the case, that's what, we will continue to move on, and we actually had a, a meeting set up with those partners at the airport. It fell through because of scheduling, but we will reestablish another date on the calendar to do that. So, on the adoption front, are there any objections to us moving forward to try to adopt those animals out? Remember, there is authority, we do have the authority under the statute to do it. The upside is, we can take some of the pressure off some of the other facilities that we've been utilizing, get some of those animals hopefully in the hands of families that want a, a new pet. The downside is, it does kind of get us one step deeper into the business, so to speak. That's a risk. We've debated it internally robustly, if you will. We think that's a pathway to kind of get to where we need to go, which could be, you know, another six to eight to ten months, so.
Yes.
Andy, would there be any potential liability to the city? Are we qualified to even make decisions like that, or would we have to have somebody that has knowledge about that? I just, I worry about liability on the city to families that potentially take an animal that doesn't work out well, or hurt somebody, or-
If I could answer that, so, excuse me, our code enforcement officer worked in the Twin Cities area doing this at a pound intake down there. She has done an amazing job for us, and I, I have no qualms that she can't, you know, she can definitely handle this. And you know, I also want to let you know, Grand Rapids, so we've checked with numbers and stuff, Grand Rapids takes in less than half the amount of animals that we do, and they have their same places that they bring them to. So if we get, and I'm just going to say, if we get six to eight animals a week, they might get three, you know, and they, they, they don't have a problem getting their animals anywhere, because it's been a, you know, long systemic way of doing it. And we are just, you know, we just started bringing ours to Precious Thaws, to Rough Rescue, Contented, or, yeah, Contented Critters, and the Masabi Animal Humane Society in Virginia. So, they're full. And so I, I feel like with us putting them out even more, there's just a lot of animals that pop up in the spring, and I, I feel that we're doing them a disservice, we're also doing the animals a disservice if we're just holding on to them, you know?
Yeah, I would agree, yeah.
Candy, the animals, question for you, the animals that come in, are they just being brought in by our staff?
They, they are being brought in by our staff.
Just by our staff?
Yes, so it could be, it could be something through the police department, and, and maybe you want to speak to that, or it can be our, you know, just the CSO's bringing them in because they're loose. And we have had a lot of them claimed, and people are thanking us for putting it out on social media and on our website, so, I mean, Kelly's doing a great job of that, and then if you want to talk about, you know, some of the things that it takes for them to get your animals there.
Yeah, I think you hit on it pretty well, Candy. Last week alone, we had six brought in. We had an incident today where one was brutally abused, you know, that's usually where we're dealing with it, so we do have to have a place to take them. So when we're full, it becomes an issue.
If I may, I want to add one more thing, and clarity for our city council, but for our residents too, we're not suggesting we become an animal shelter, we're not taking surrenders, we're just looking for other avenues, other outlets, to get some of these lost animals to new families. And I had mentioned that our internal group has robustly debated the upside, the downside multiple times. You know, there, there's another option that we've discussed, we, we're not pitching this right now, we don't think this is something that we should do right now, but euthanizing some of the animals that we are not able to get to another shelter. I mean, we aren't discussing every single option that we possibly can, so just please know that.
Yeah. So, just to follow, I, I would, I don't know if you have any information on it, I, I hear what Candy's saying, I just, I'm all in favor of us doing that. I'm just curious if there's any legal liability that we need to be careful of.
There, there's always going to be at least some liability. I assume if they're taking them off their, off our hands, if someone comes in to adopt, as Greg says, we're making representation as to, here's what we know about this animal, and you're taking it as is, there is no representation as to any other quality of the animal at the time, you've got to make that choice yourself. So we try to foolproof it as best we can, but that, there's no guarantee. I mean, the doc, I assume the animals that they're adopting are not going to be anything that's labeled with a dangerous dog or anything like that, but we, we're, have knowledge of the dog as a, or animal as an issue. It's going to be more the stray out the street type thing, where they, they just don't have a home.
Yeah, yeah, I don't want you to be confused, but I'm in favor of having us go ahead and try to find some homes for these animals, absolutely, just, just wanted to-
So, I'll, I'll respond to the liability piece, I would like to look a little bit more into our liability, because I, I think we should, A, but B, I want to know if there's additional coverage that we haven't considered before we do that. I think that would be the best for our organization.
Love it.
And the other, the other thing would be, that the animals would be vetted before they go out. That's important, because what's going to happen is, if they're not microchipped, if they're not, you know, they're rabies vaccinations and all of that, we're going to end up with them back. And so it's important that that be, you know, let known.
Yeah. Well, thank you, and thank you to the staff for taking this on, that's, that's no easy task, so it's appreciated.
It isn't.
All right. One more question?
So, shifting gears from the shelter and animal intake, so, the Iron Range Racing Association has vacated the venue. Remember March, that was their thirty-day time to vacate the premises? They are out. We've changed the locks, I believe, so that's done. I think they left some belongings, I don't know if it's expected that we throw those or how we handle those, we've been engaged with legal on how to handle that property as we move forward. But what I really want to talk to the city council about is the back rent, the Iron Range Racing Association, they owe our taxpayers about fifteen thousand dollars in back rent. There is a utility bill, outstanding utilities, and we're trying to get that final number. There could be some damage in missing equipment, we haven't yet established that, but my thought would be that we capture all of those things that are owed to our taxpayers, and we put it into a document, and then we come back to the city council for direction on how best to handle that. Litigation, I think, is probably the most likely, because I doubt if they have any property that we could put a lien against. But I would want the city council to know kind of all the facts, and I want our taxpayers to know that we're talking about that, and we are pursuing what's owed to our taxpayers. So with that, maybe I'll just pitch it to Andy, did I forget any of the details when it comes to what our options are when it comes to collecting those outstanding debts?
I think you covered it pretty much. The only other issue would be potentially a, a storage fee for having to hold the items that are still there. If there's any other fee or expense, I think the, the city's probably going to incur, other than potential legal expenses, if in fact you have to go the route of collection.
So that's my report, where we're at. I think the, the transition to the new operator is going to really kind of take off now, it's April, trying to get ready for the May opener. But there is a cleanup aspect to this, and I want to make sure that we bring that back to the city council and get direction, so, any quick questions, I'd be happy to try to-
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. So, I would assume the PUC bill, would that be something the utility company would go after, and we're looking at the, the back rent?
So that's a great question, and so what we did internally is, we satisfied the utility bill. Right? We satisfied that utility bill, is that true? Yeah, so, and we did that because we didn't want it to impact the next operator. So, we need power out there, so that's what we did. What we thought we would do is, we would just put that all into one action and then move it forward that way.
Okay.
It's a great question, but that is how we have of that.
Thank you for the clarification, yes, thank you.
Any other questions for Mrs. Przynski? All right. Anything else?
That's all I have for this evening, thank you for your patience.
At this time, we'll move on to bids and votes. First off, city engineer, Mrs. Story.
Mayor Council attaches Beaver Management Agreement with the USDA for 2025. This is an annual agreement to help the city manage the Beaver, Beaver population. Last year, you moved twenty Beavers, seven dams at ten different sites. Like I said, this is a budgeted item, and I'm asking for council approval.
Okay, hearing what Mrs. Story had to say, for Beaver Management, wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Bellis.
Support.
Support. Councilor Hoffman-Sackman. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. B.
Mayor Council, we opened bids for the 2025 City State Aid project. This is Twenty Third Street from First Avenue, Ninth Avenue East. The low bid was from KGM Constructors in the amount of two million, seven hundred and forty-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars and seventy cents. Our engineer's estimate was just over three million dollars. This is a project we're partnering with the Hibbing Public Utilities on. The breakdown of the project is, City stated funds is one million, one hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty cents. The Hibbing Public Utilities is one million, six hundred and sixteen thousand, ninety-two dollars and fifty cents. So they're replacing a lot of water main on the project, they're doing some steamwork on the project, some lighting work on the project, and I believe they're working on sizing the gas main to the memorial building, to try to change order that into this project. So I'm asking for council approval to award the bid to KGM in the amount of two million, seven hundred and forty-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars and seventy cents.
Hearing what Mrs. Story had to say regarding the 2025 State Aid project for Twenty Third Street, wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Swyberg.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil. Any other discussions for Mrs. Story? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Orola.
Thank you, Mayor Council. In anticipation of the racing season, we want to get in there as quick as possible and get a new catch fence set up in front of the grandstand, so looking for your approval on a, on the catch fence, roughly three hundred and sixty feet of ten-foot tall chain link, and then that'll also have the cables run through it at various points, so in the future, if we have sprint cars and stuff, that will satisfy that requirement. And then also roughly three hundred and sixty feet of six-foot chain link, that will be a security fence that would close in the northwest side of the grandstand that we tore down, where it's wide open right now. So this would secure that, that side of the, the facility. So, looking for your approval of fifty-three thousand, five hundred dollars to Iron Oaks fencing for both of those jobs, so.
Okay, hearing what city service director, Mr. Orola, had to say, wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bellis. Any discussion? Nick, these funds will be come out of, are the funds just for the racetrack?
Correct, I meant to, meant to say that as well. They will come out of the, the racetrack funds. We have roughly eighty-seven thousand in there right now, and so this will bring us down to about thirty, thirty-three, thirty-four in there going forward. So, as we budget the next year, twenty-six, twenty-seven, we're going to have to, you know, account for any projects that we have and replenish that, so.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Orola. Okay, we move on to boards and commissions, and we do have four openings. I just want to make sure we have four openings, so that we're accurate on that, and we do have one, two, three, four, five, six people that are applying. So what I'll do is, I'll go through one opening at a time. I want to, I want to have two pieces of paper yet. What's that? Oh, I'm sorry, first we have to go to number one, thank you. And that is accept the resignation of John Petrangial for planning commission and board adjustments appeals effective April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. And I just want to say, I know John's been on that a long time, and I want to thank him very much for his dedication, and wish him the best moving forward. Okay, so we have, we need approval for that.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilor Hoffman-Sackman.
Support.
Support by Councilor Swyberg. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Yes, Candy?
So, he, John had put in his resignation as of the thirtieth, so one of those that, the first one would not start, I take that back, it's the second one now, no, the third one, sorry. The third one would be his.
The one on twelve, thirty-one, twenty-six?
Correct, the first one, yeah.
Or the third one?
Yes, the third one, and then, so that person would start in May, just so-
So instead of twelve, thirty-one, twenty-six?
No, that's still okay, but that one, the appointment would start in May, because his, he put his-
Okay, that's true.
Right, yep.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have four openings, and we have six applicants, so we'll go one, one opening at a time. So one vacancy, completing a three-year term, ending twelve, thirty-one, twenty-seven for a Hibbing resident. So we have applicants, and I'll make a first motion, and I'll make a motion for Corey Lubavich.
I'll support that.
For one of our openings, we have a motion of support. So at this time, is there any other nominations? Is there any other nominations? Is there any other nominations? Okay, at that, we will go through. We have one nomination, and that is for Mr. Corey Lubavich. We have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Mr. Lubavich is on the board. Okay, we now move on to one vacancy, completing a three-year term, ending twelve, thirty-one, twenty-seven for a Hibbing resident, taking nominations.
I'll nominate Joseph Jump.
We have a nomination of Joseph Jump, is there a second?
I'll support that.
We have a support by Councilor Swyberg. Okay, is there any other nomination? Is there any other nomination? Is there any other nomination? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. So Mr. Jump will fill the vacancy, second vacancy, and term ending twelve, thirty-one- and term ending twelve thirty-one twenty-seven. We now move on to the third, uh, one vacancy completing a three-year term ending twelve thirty-one twenty-six for a Hibbing resident. Taking nominations.
Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, I'd like to nominate, uh, Dimitri, Dimitri Karvolios.
So, we have a nomination for Dimitri. Do we have a second? We have support.
I'll support that.
Support by Counselor Bayless. Okay, at this time, uh, is there any other nominations?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Ms. Mikeich reached out to be, and I will nominate her.
Okay, Darlene?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Mikeich, all right?
I'll support that.
Okay, so we have support, uh, and a second?
Counselor Hoffman-Sackman was the second.
Yes.
Okay.
That is a second. We have support and a second.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. Okay, we have two. Is there any other nominations for a third position? Any other nominations? Is there any other nominations? So, at this time, uh, we will, uh, we have a nomination support for Dimitri, so we will go first with him, and I'll go in order. Uh, Mr. Bayless?
In favor.
In favor.
Are you go, are you going by order of whoever's sitting, or by the way we're written on this paper?
By the way we're sitting here.
So, technically, um, actually Counselor, Counselor Schweber would be the first one, not, not Counselor Fossil.
Oh, because?
Just because I keep track.
Okay.
I know.
I see, I see what you're doing.
Sorry.
Counselor Schweber?
No.
Okay. Counselor Bayless, was a yes?
Yes.
Counselor Hildebrand?
No.
Counselor Sackman?
No.
Counselor Whitney?
No.
And then you would do Counselor Fossil?
Yes, Counselor Fossil.
Yes.
And I would be a yes. Okay, so now we'll move on. We have a four-three. No, three yes. We move on to Darlene Mikeich. We're, Darlene Mikeich, uh, Counselor Schweber.
Yes.
Counselor Bayless?
Yes.
Counselor Hildebrand?
Yes.
Counselor Sackman?
Yes.
Counselor Whitney?
Yes.
Counselor Fossil?
Yes.
Counselor Pete Heiduk, mayor? Yes. So, Darlene Mikeich is our third representative. We move on to our one vacancy completing a three-year term ending twelve thirty-one twenty-six for a Hibbing resident. Uh, looking for a nomination.
I'll nominate Gordon Smith.
We have a nomination of Gordon Smith. Do we have a second?
Support.
Support by Counselor Schweber. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Okay, at this time, uh, we'll go in order again. Uh, nomination was, who made the original nomination?
Counselor Hoffman-Sackman.
Counselor Hoffman-Sackman.
Supported by Counselor Schweber.
Yep. So, Counselor Hoffman-Sackman, yes.
Counselor Schweber will be first.
Oh, Counselor Schweber.
Yes.
Counselor Bayless.
Counselor Bayless?
Yes.
Counselor Hildebrand?
Yes.
Counselor Hoffman-Sackman?
Yes.
Counselor Whitney?
Yes.
Mayor Heiduk, yes. Counselor Fossil?
Yes.
Okay, so we have three yeses, uh, or?
Seven.
Seven yeses. We have three, all applicants filled, that's the last applicant. So, those going on will be Joe Jump, Corey Lubavitch, Darlene Mikeich, and Gordon Smith. And I thank everyone, uh, for their commitment to Dimitri. Thank you for your time on the board commission.
So, if I could just say one more thing. So, on our next agenda, we will have the heritage preservation, human rights, fire department, and if we get the inter, those, um, if we get the interviews for the library done, then that one will also be on there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So, we move forward now to closed session, uh, for the purpose of real property parcels pursuant to Minnesota State Section thirteen D dash, or dot, uh, zero five S U B dot three C three. Uh, we need a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
So moved by Counselor Bayless?
Support.
Supported by Counselor Fossil. All right, we will go into closed session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Excuse me, Andy, um, do they have to do one for each one, or no?
The closed sessions will be separate in there.
Okay, but we can just do it through?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.